Okay, then we can give a warm water of a welcome.
Oh, here comes Cantland, too.
Here comes trouble.
Okay, since your partner is here. Please identify yourself on the record, please.
From Lost Pass Road and.
Terry Fish from One Flat Mountain Road.
Great.
Can we sit, if you want us to sit?
Whatever you'd like to do.
Whatever you'd like to do.
All right, so the question we have is the, what should we expect and what should be the arrangement with the town's responsibility for maintaining the drainage ditches and shoulders of Lost Pass Road? We understand the paving, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
In last year, we, the town was unable to help us out because they were shorthanded manpower. Remember you had a guy with a broken leg and how they did this? And so now we're around to this year, I've checked in with Mr. Mayhew about three weeks ago and we haven't heard back since. So I'm looking for a clarification, what's the reasonable expectation we should have on an annual basis?
Okay, well, I can tell you that if you have watched our TV show and are up to date with the series, you'll see that every meeting for the last month and a half or so, that I have asked Mr. Mayhew for his maintenance schedule specifically to drainage and repairing and a schedule to get this stuff on, and I've been promised it is coming, and I'm getting, I'm looking forward to it with great anticipation. But I find that now that things have gone there, there should be no reason why we don't have that schedule. Mark, would you agree with me on that?
Yes, we have the staff.
And that is a priority.
It is.
The expectation would be some shoulder work, some washouts. The weeds, hack down the weeds in the drainage ditch.
Yep.
We have two headers, the headers that are made out of the rocks and concrete, two of the needlework bare, not extensive.
Yep.
And at the bottom of the street, there's a trench right at the entrance that leads the water off to the right, so that's all silted in flood. And typically, they would dig that out once in a while. So just, just.
Can you send us that, or give it to Mark in writing?
Yep.
And I'll tell you, not to put you off any more than you've been put off, but what we are waiting for is for Jim to bring us a list of everything to be done, and we will prioritize it and get back to you. And we will let you know what we can and can't do, and if we can work together to make a resolution of this, we will. But it is a top priority where we have, we need to pay attention to this because it's costing us more in the long run by not paying attention to it.
I will get, Mark, I'll send you an email with specifics.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in.
Thanks, guys.
All right, so we'll, Bill, you're on the agenda, but do you want to move up to privilege of the floor?
I'd love to.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to move new business, item B, Bill Cantland, discussion of signs and marketing, to now, and I'm going to excuse myself, so someone else will have to take over.
And you'll probably recuse yourself as well.
I don't like that, that's an idoism, that came from the OJ trial.
We are trying hard to do some marketing or pre-marketing for another building at Green Peak Condominiums. And as I was doing this, I came up with some numbers here that I thought you might find interesting. The real estate market, at best, is very soft. What this shows you is the number of total closed sales in all of Waterville Valley for the first six months of the year for the last three years. And I think those numbers kind of speak to themselves, and they affect overall prices of property and absorption rates, and eventually, they have an impact on the town's assessed values also, I think. So we would like some help in trying to get pre-sales at Green Peak. We don't know what the town could do to help facilitate us, but we'd like to get a sign up over there. And I understand your interpretation of new development signs, which I think is a somewhat strict interpretation, that really defines what new development is. And I think a strict interpretation of the sign is a disservice to anybody who's trying to get some new units built in Waterville. So we're going to submit another sign application, but I'd love to discuss the zoning ordinance with you or any other pertinent issues, but we'd really like some help in trying to bring some attention to that piece of land and where those next three units will go.
Well, I think you could probably help yourself by submitting an application and putting it through the planning board process, and that would probably clear a lot of the hurdles that you're concerned about.
The sign application goes to the planning board?
No, no.
No, no, the planned unit development is not approved at this point in time, and that's the major hurdle here.
The subdivision.
Subdivision.
Right, we have a phase one approval of a phased subdivision. Now, we do, we have not applied for, nor do we have final approval for any of the subsequent phases.
Right.
And if that's a deal killer, that's a deal killer. But I think in the long run, the selectmen really ought to think about this. If you want new development in Waterville Valley, whether it's Green Peak or anything else, developments are typically phased today because if you don't phase them, all of these phased, these approved parcels of land become at risk to mortgage companies and liens. And that's why they're phased, that's why this project has been phased. And any developer who comes to town, whether it's Bob Wilds or somebody else, is likely to come in with a phased development. Now, I think the town needs to help find a way to help these, a developer sell future phases of a subdivision, particularly if it was submitted to the planning board as a phased approval and phase, you know, and you've got completed application approval, and you've got final approval. These are, that interpretation of this regulation is very difficult to work with, and it also says that when the first unit sells, there are no more signs. Well, that's pretty good, but most developers aren't successful until they sell the last units. And my suggestion would be in the long run that that needs to be changed. And I don't think the town's at risk at that because you have an annual permit requirement anyway. So if something's dragging on and something's bad.
So Mark, let me ask you a question here. The sign regulations are in the zoning ordinance, right?
That's correct.
All right. If the planning board would have discussed this and made a decision that, no, suppose they made a decision to loosen up the sign regulations.
Right.
That does take a town vote for it to become officially part of the zoning, but in the interim, what takes place?
If we're within, it's either 90 or 120 days of town meeting.
Right.
Whatever the planning board votes to move forward to town meeting goes into effect, okay?
All right.
I'd have to check the law to whether, I can't remember whether it's 90 or 120 days, but it has the same effect as if it were adopted. And then, if the town approves it, it just continues on. If the town defeats it, then we have to go back and.
Right. And let me ask you about the.
But it does have the same force of the zoning ordinance at that time.
The subdivision regulations.
Right.
The subdivision regulations are not, in fact, subject to town vote.
That's correct, they're controlled by the.
The planning board themselves can choose to adopt to change those, because I think there is another troublesome, if the planning board wants to change this, there's another troublesome set of wording in there, which is what, which gives me more pause than the sign regulations, which basically says, before you do anything, you have to have an approved subdivision.
That's right.
I mean, that's the spirit of that, and that has been, that's probably been around since the subdivision regulations were written. And I'm thinking, you know, like even technically, that's why, you know, I know this issue came up with marking the outlines of the buildings, you know, or the potential buildings. It's, well, there's those stakes, those engineer stakes that are sitting out there.
Their vote last, as I think I told you before, their vote was that that was not allowed because it was, it was.
It violates the subdivision regulations, which says that you, before you do anything like that, you're supposed to have an approval for a subdivision. And I, the only, well, and the logic that I'm running across here is, is it puts pressure on the planning board because suppose you sell those three things, they haven't approved anything. So now you got a dilemma, suppose they don't approve what you sold, and it puts pressure on them to agree to what it is you sold. And that's, and I think you would even agree, that's a difficult position to be in.
Well, let's, that might be in some situations, but let's look at the bigger picture. First of all, Green Peak Condominium is a phased condominium. The building that is on the ground has been submitted to the planning board with all the infrastructure, all the roads, and exactly where the building is, was submitted to the planning board and accepted by the planning board as part of a completed application of a three-phase subdivision. And to only, to get final approval for that, we only have to submit a final application, not a completed application.
No, that's not, that's not the case.
I, that's my question for the planning board.
And here's what, I went and looked at.
Just astounded.
No, when I looked at the plan that was approved by the planning board, none, when you initially came in, there were roads and there were the other phases in the project in Green Peak in total. What was actually approved, though, is just the one parcel with nothing else.
Absolutely, Mark, but that's because approvals of subdivision in Waterville Valley is a two-step process.
Right.
The first step is a completed application process.
Right.
And if it's a phased project, you have to show all the future phases, including access and infrastructure and everything. And we submitted all the roads, road profiles, sewer lines, water, drainage for the whole thing, the whole thing for completed application was done for the whole project. And it was accepted by the planning board as phase, it was phase one approval for the phased project. And if there's any confusion about that, I'd really like to know because I need to get my attorney involved in that. Because we're not deviating from that plan. And I put infrastructure, there are sewer lines, there are water lines, and there are roads built for all, for those other phases, not completed, but it's all done, and all of that stuff was approved. So I think you'll, what my understanding is, so now you've got phase one approval for whatever phase one was, you've got all the other phases have been submitted. If I want to come in, my understanding is, if I want to come in for final approval for one more of these phases, I come in with the requirements for final approval. I don't have to go back and do the completed application because all of that stuff was submitted to the planning board and approved by the planning board. And maybe that's not a subject for discussion today.
But I think it is, I mean, we need to clarify that.
Yeah.
Because I think, well, there was, there was.
I do not think that the planning board quite shares your.
I believe.
I'm only speaking as one planning board member, but that was, my understanding is all we approved was the first three units.
Final approval, I agree.
And then there are also.
There was a general plan presented.
Wasn't general, it was exact.
You're saying, well, then I think we ought to be able to go back and dig that up.
But then there are also these two letters saying you've withdrawn your application.
That was, that was for phase two. We came in, we were going to do phase two of the three-phase application.
Okay.
And I've forgotten what the reason was, but we withdrew that application. So that was an application for final approval of a phase two.
Okay, so we. So your understanding, and we already get to planning board, is that the whole thing is approved, so that from the perspective of the sign, for instance, if the wording of the sign ordinance read that when the last unit is sold, from your perspective, you're saying, I've only sold three of the nine units that were proposed.
No, I agree that we do not have approval.
Right.
For any future units. But I, but the case that I want to make is we have approval of a phased development. The future phases have to come in for final approval.
I think.
And that might, that.
We're going to have to go back to the planning board and Terry and Ray and find out exactly what was written and approved. I'm not going to tell you what, my memory is different, but it's failing, so.
Well, no, and I think the confusion came from the fact that those other lots and the conceptual building envelopes were on the original plan that you presented to the planning board.
They were on every plan I presented.
Well, no, they weren't on every plan because there was a discussion, and those things were removed. In the town records right now, what was approved does not, it only has the road to phase two. And in fact, the road is dotted off of the phase one property line at the request, and that was part of the discussion that went on at the time.
Well, but.
But I'm just saying, this is what's causing the confusion.
But my understanding was that that was, I mean, there are some things the planning board wants that don't always fit with what the subdivision, and as a developer, you don't want that on the plan? I'll take it off the plan.
Right.
It's no big deal. You want it shaded, we'll shade it, if it makes it easier for you to understand. But there are two, we're talking about two different problems, I think. Problem one is, what is a phased subdivision, and what's required to get final approval for another phase?
Yeah.
And I met with Terry Waite about this last week and asked him that, he was going to ask the town attorney, he told me, talked to Mark and thought that we were in agreement that it was a phased subdivision.
Oh, okay, well.
That's what Terry told me.
Well, the planning board is.
But he discussed that with Mark, and Mark doesn't agree with that interpretation now, which is fine. I would really like to, A, find out what is involved if we're going to go and get approval of other phases, and two, the sign regulations do not help us sell new projects. And in the long run, that's really important. When I meet with developers or people who are coming into, who are interested in doing bigger projects in Waterville, how's the town to work with? That's a question I get, and.
Well, the town, I think we've been pretty clear in the pedestrian study and everything that we're trying to do for the development of the center of town. I think the town wants to help developers, but the problem that we have is, we need to make changes to the way that our regulations are because right now, it doesn't give the board much leeway in what they can do. I mean, it's pretty clear right now that you can't, you can't offer anything for sale that is not approved.
No, that's, first of all, Mark, there.
I think that's what Bill is talking about.
There's two, you're talking about two, I can go and I can do a non-binding reservation agreement.
Yes, we change those rules to allow you to do that.
I can do that on anything irrespective of what I've been doing with the planning board.
Right, that's correct.
The other question, the other thing that I think I can do absolutely if I'm on our land, if I want to go out and cut down trees like we did on that.
We agree.
I have a right to do that.
We agree, until you apply, which is the catch-22. Once you do apply, then technically, you can't cut the trees.
If I want to put stakes in the ground, it's my interpretation, I can put stakes in the ground.
That's, I'm not sure. My interpretation would be, I'm struggling with the wording in the subdivision regulations that says, before you do anything, you must have approval. And what is anything at this point in time? So I want to interpret it, when you start outlining potential buildings, the dilemma that I run into, and why that's important is, suppose the planning board says you can't do it there, or they want to move it, or there's some other consideration.
And violations of.
Well, yeah, but now you've got two people at bottom, you know, as well as I do, that that's going to, I think, influence their decision.
Well, and, and you go back to, in this case, I've got a phased subdivision, I'm doing exactly what I've always said I was going to do. But I also think that the town attorney needs to get in a conversation with my attorney about what I can do on my land without any approvals. And right now, my interpretation is, if I want to go and put stakes for future buildings, anywhere on any of my land, I can go do it. I would find it really hard to believe that I can't. But my attorney's available to talk to your attorney as soon as your attorney's available on that. Because if that's not the case, then I don't want to do it. I mean, I don't want to fight with the town, I want to work with the town.
Now, back to your.
We all want the same thing, I think.
Back to your question about the first, the sign thing, all right. Here's what I would suggest. First of all, I, again, my memory, I think it was last year, but it could have been two years ago, we had a lengthy discussion about signs, of which there were a number of people who came to a planning board meeting and voiced their opinions about signs, and then the planning board voted. And I don't, there were a lot of changes that were made, but one of them was this issue of real estate signs. Now, I think at that meeting, we were primarily talking about how many signs you could have for an open house, but, and maybe that's all it was, you know, maybe. But I think the place to start, if you, if you're convinced that that's, that regulation needs to change, I think you should go to the planning board and ask the planning board to consider changing that. They then, they could initiate the process to make that change, and as Mark said, if you're within a certain window, the regulation would, in fact, take effect.
It'll take effect.
It would take effect until the next town meeting.
Right.
So I think that would probably be the best route. I technically, can we change it? I don't think we can. I think only the planning.
But it's got to go to the planning board and be voted on now.
Right, it's still got to go to the planning board.
Puts it into effect.
I'm willing to do some stuff on that to try to get something that I think is more workable.
All right.
As we go forward. When we do submit this application for a sign for this next phase at Green Peak, I would.
See, I.
I would ask you to look at 9D in your sign regulations.
Yeah.
Which says it may be erected from approval of the project and maintained. Approval of the project, does that include a completed application approval, a approval of a phased subdivision? I think that's open for interpretation.
Right, it is. I would agree.
I submit the application, I would ask the selectmen to think about what their interpretation of that wording would be.
I think we've got to try to get to the bottom of this issue. Does the planning board believe they've approved the entire project?
Yeah. I came to the planning board, I think, a year ago.
Yeah.
Because the same question came up, and I remember bringing all the documents in and giving the planning board, and I thought there was an agreement at that point that it was a phased subdivision. But in any event, thank you for your time, I'm sorry to take up.
No, 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 no.
This is time in.
It's important.
At this point, but thank you for your consideration.
Nine, you said nine, Bill.
9D.
Yeah, 9D.
For those of you watching at home, I'm back.
He is.
All right, we will move on to the approval of the minutes from June 22.
Yeah, I saw a typo in there.
Yes, there is typo.
Green Peel.
Peel is, should be peak.
I'll read it for you in a minute.
I would ask that we change line 135 also, which is having a discussion about the water-sewer bond. Yeah, line 99 was the first one. Line 35, line 135, should, I believe should read that we would accept the bid of the low bidder who can meet our schedule. I think we should add that qualifier. It's, I don't think we should feel any obligation to accept a bid that doesn't meet our requirement for time.
Yep.
Regardless of whether it's a low bid. So some statement to that effect. So I just suggest adding in who can meet our schedule.
Oh, I understand, but I think we want it in our minutes.
I want it in the minutes, so somebody's going to read those and say, well, mine was a low bid, you have to take mine.
Right, understood.
And I'm saying, no, it needs to meet our schedule as well.
Yep.
And obviously, our requirements.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's a broader term, you know, that would meet all other requirements.
All other requirements. I like that wording the best.
Okay, and number 90, I'd like something included that I excuse myself from the conversation. And this was about the Waterville Company land. Then also on.
Yes.
Line 125, could we have the name of the attorney you spoke to put in?
Oh, yes, right. Russ Hilliard.
And.
125, 124 on line. Attorney Russ Hilliard, instead of an attorney.
And 143, discussion followed regarding writing letters to our local senators to add, and we should put, add that to make that you were instructed to write letters.
Yeah, okay.
To do that.
Yep.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
No, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, done. Financial update.
The revenue and expense report does include the second quarter water and sewer. As I pointed out in the memo, we were at 40.
Eight percent.
Forty-eight percent for water, 49 percent for wastewater, and 48 percent for solid waste fees, doing well. It was, these first two quarters are generally the smaller quarters, so I think we're.
Hey, can I just drop easy?
Yeah, just put them on my desk.
Put them on desk. I can't, I can't get into your.
We'll take her. That's all right. Thanks, Nelson. So I think we're just about where we need to be. I think the summer quarter will be large enough to make up the couple of percentage points that we're down right now in those three areas. Recreation is obviously doing very well, we can talk about that, but I just did a comparison for you through July 13th for the previous few years, and we're, we're doing significantly better than we have been historically.
How's the collection on property taxes?
Property taxes, I think, I didn't check it today, but I think we're probably around 80, 85 percent, which is where we historically.
I thought we were up over 90.
Well, we will be, we will be, people will continue to make payments, and by the time we get to the end of the year, by December, we will, we will be in the 90s by the time we close out the books.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody have any other questions on the financials?
I did want to point out, we are going to be able to add $4,000 when we do the MS434 at the, in October. Because of payments in lieu of taxes, the federal government paid us $4,000 more than we were anticipating, so that's good. And the miscellaneous revenue line does include the, we've received the payment in lieu of taxes from the ice arena, from the hockey academy.
Okay.
So they've made their first half of payment.
Okay.
So that's good.
While we were on the, remind you, you picked up, have you heard this, that the Wolves are leaving?
Yes, they're gone.
Yeah, they are gone, but the Wolves are separate from the hockey academy and separate from the tournament. So they were a separate entity. That business has moved to Laconia.
I thought Fontas really ran both businesses.
No, that's Steve Jacobson.
It was a, it's a totally different person, totally different company. And I called John and talked to, and Fred, and talked to them about it.
Okay.
They, they are not, they were having conflicts with the Wolves on scheduling for their tournament business, for the public skate times that they've committed to us.
Right.
So their moving out has actually been okay. As far as having teams here, the hockey academy is raising their own teams, same.
But we've contacted them, and from their perspective, they're still trying to make a go with this business.
That's true.
I was just concerned that there was.
Their only issue right now is the Canadian summer tournament business.
Right.
It is. It is down this year, but they already have been talking to that developer, that person that coordinates those, and they think that next year will be better.
Well, whatever.
So.
Okay, alright.
Yeah. As far as from the expense side, none of the departments are really having an issue right now. They're all in line.
Now, these numbers are through the end of June?
July 11.
No, July 11.
Oh.
I ran, I ran the report.
Thank you.
Monday.
Okay, got you.
Yep. Okay. Alright, so we can move on from the finances, and we can start with department heads. There's only, there's only one here, so we'll let him go.
This is just our activity going back to June 8th, sorry, a little.
Jeez, no, I, I have copies.
Do you have copies?
I do.
Okay.
Do you want that?
It seemed to be pretty, pretty on par, overall quiet, relatively quiet, 4th of July.
Was the crowd down the, this 4th of July?
On the town square side, it seemed a little light to me, but I only think that that's because, you know, the majority of the local crowds, I think.
Had left.
Well, the vacationer folks, but the local crowds fill up Packards and, you know, Packards Road and the conference center, I think only two are the first ones to be able to leave.
Numbers of vehicles, though, pretty much.
Yeah, they look pretty much.
In line. Was it the same?
Yeah.
The fireworks were great.
The beach was full.
Yeah.
Any reason why medical responses were up dramatically, or is that just luck of the draw? Are we getting mountain bike accidents?
Luck of the draw, when you get more, we got more bikers, more hikers, more, more activity, that tends to follow.
We had an untimely or unattended death?
Yes, we did.
I didn't hear about that.
So, this is just more of a conversation than anything, but the, you know, the events of the last couple of weeks always make me concerned about safety of our own public safety offices, you know, the, you know, routine traffic stopping and somebody gets shot. Is there anything that we need to do, any, any words of wisdom in terms of how we go about these things? I mean, the last thing I want to hear is one of our own police officers got shot or something.
Yeah, we, we're constantly training on, on those types of subjects and its conversations that we have, you know, around the coffee machine, you know, and encouragement of each other to kind of stay diligent out there, and that even though we're here, we're not totally isolated to that, that kind of thing. But it's something that we formally train at least a couple of times a year, just to keep your skills up.
Yeah, and my concern is, you know, we stopped someone because they got a taillight out. The last thing I would want is that to escalate to some kind of an incident where somebody gets hurt. I mean, it's just for a taillight, come on.
Yeah.
So.
And you never know what you're gonna, that's the.
Well, no, that's the problem, you never know.
You never know what's going on, you know, the person in that car could have, be having the worst day of their life, and all of a sudden, here we are, kind of interjecting themselves into their life for the, what they perceive to be a pretty negative activity, so.
Okay, alright.
I've been staying pretty close to the IACP.
Who tells what that is?
The International Association of Chiefs of Police, which I'm a member of.
Yeah.
Does a very good job about kind of keeping the pulse of what's going on in the country and making some pretty good recommendations on things that we could do with the public and things that we can do with our own staff that, one, that improves officer safety, and the biggest thing right now is use of force training.
Okay.
And so, there's been some, we've been training the new model for over three years now, and I don't think that's, it's slowly.
Yeah.
Making its, making its way through a lot of other police agencies, so I try to stay up on that.
Okay.
As I'm the firearms instructor, so I have to, but it's all managing the liability and managing the risk, so.
Okay. Anything else?
No, you know, in light of that stuff, I just talked to Chris, and I think we decided on August 5th, Friday, have our next coffee with a cop, location to be determined. We'll find some, someplace to have it.
Anyplace left in town that serves coffee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I might approach Mulligan's just because.
Yeah, sure.
We should be taking delivery, the truck goes in, the new truck is ready, it's going to be outfitted next week. I just got word today that the cruiser is out, scheduled to be outfitted the week of July 25th.
Really? Are we still getting 2017?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So, hopefully that first week and maybe buy a coffee with a cop, we'll, we'll take delivery of those and we can kind of showcase them to the public and they.
Or even push it off a week to make sure we do.
Yeah.
Well, whatever.
No, that's all one week.
Yeah, that would be a good idea, just let people see where their tax dollars are going.
Yeah, absolutely, so that's what I'm, I'm hoping to do.
Great. Alright, do you want to do recreation? I do. I just, I provided you with the summer camp.
Yep.
By week. This was week three, that ended last Friday, was our second largest camp day ever. And we're tied for second, there was one other day with 202.
Yeah.
So, it was a great week.
Yeah.
They're having a good week this week. We're ahead for the year through week three by 79 campers. So, we're, you know, our, if, a lot of that had to do with the 4th of July.
Yep.
Weekend, obviously, but, but even if you compare it to the weeks two and four, it's never been this big, so we had a, we had a very good turnout.
Good.
Other than that, Ice Cream Social, other bingo and that sort of thing are also going very well. Revenues are, are doing great, so the rec is, is doing well.
Good.
I have a non-public matter to talk to you about with the department on a personnel issue, but we can talk about that later.
Okay, great.
And do you want to put public works off it? Public works, public works, we've completed noon peak, we have, I have been talking to Jim about getting the schedule for his, his maintenance, road maintenance items.
Yep.
We've just, he's been just keeping up with mowing and, and other. Yeah, we've got to get this road stuff going. But we've got to get the road stuff squared away, so we need to address that. We are just waiting for the water and sewer. Oh, I did want to, on water and sewer, as part of the billing, we reviewed all of the water meters in town.
Right.
We now have every water meter that was in the original bid package.
Mm-hmm.
All of those have been installed.
Okay.
We just got the last one done this past week. The new constru, of the new construction that occurred since we did the initial part of the project, we have two that, that still need water meters, but we're in contact with the, the businesses, and.
Do we have a policy, I know we don't have much new construction going on, do we have a policy in terms of with new construction, what our expectation is relative to meters?
Yes, we provide the meter, the.
But if somebody were to build a condo, are we, are we saying you, you shouldn't install one meter, or?
We will require at least a meter pit.
Okay.
If the condos themselves in their construction can have the water meter installed on a by-unit basis, we will do that.
Okay.
Because we prefer to do it by unit, but if they can't.
Okay.
Then we'll do it with a pit for the building.
Okay.
The minimum requirement is that we have one per building.
Okay.
So, that's, that's going very well.
Are we going to come back and talk about the water sewer bill thing?
We are.
Okay.
That's another, another.
Another matter, alright.
But I wanted to let you know that the meters are going well. We've not had any further problems with the grinder pump issue, so that's fixed, I'll say, because.
For today.
Doing okay.
Right.
For today. So, and I think from a public work standpoint, that's water, all the water testing, wastewater testing, and, and we had a state inspection in the last couple of weeks that we did well on, so that's going well.
Do we, some, I thought in previous summers, when the lagoons get hot, we've had problems.
Yes, and, and I actually just talked to Greg about that.
Yeah.
Yesterday, and we are, we are not at break point chlorination yet.
Okay.
So, we're still, we're still doing well with that.
Alright.
It hasn't been really hot yet. He does expect in August that we will have to chlorinate and go through that. He's already put the chlorine on order.
Alright.
And he'll, he'll be dealing with that.
Okay.
But he's not worried. We are, a couple of things, maintenance wise, of the dam up by the lagoons, we've had woodchucks come in and start digging tunnels, so we are disposing, getting them out of there and, and getting the holes closed up.
Did you catch yours?
We, we actually caught two.
Yeah, he's still working on the second one at Lenny's, yeah.
Yeah, so, they are really thick this year, so they're.
Mine's gone.
Yours is gone?
Yes, he's not digging the same hole he used to.
Good. Well, we, we just want to make sure that there's no issue with DES, because it is considered a dam, so we'll, we'll take care of that.
Yeah, we don't want to talk to them about that.
Yeah, no, we do not. Dixne on the woodchucks. Yeah, exactly. So, otherwise than that, it's going well.
Okay.
Are we going to talk about the water bill? Fine, yes.
Got a question. Snoopy.
Snoopy. Snoopy never received a bill before.
Forever.
Ever.
Ever.
Until, I know, I don't know why.
Let me just ask you a general question as I was looking at their sewage bill.
Yeah.
What, for commercial accounts, what is the sewage bill a function of the water usage?
Yes, it is. It is, it's calculated on the water use.
Right, where, I think the only, I think the tennis center might be the one exception to this. I don't think they produce any sewage, do they?
No. No, out, out at the tennis courts themselves?
Yeah.
No, they do not.
So, but we're billing them a heck of a lot of money for sewage treatment, and I'm wondering whether we need to, if I were them, I would complain, I, they probably haven't complained yet, and they maybe haven't seen the bill, but that doesn't seem right to me, that they're basically just using water, I think, to water the courts.
Yeah.
I don't believe they have any facilities that actually generate sewage.
They don't, they're using the BBTS facilities.
I.
Do you want to zero those?
I, I'm, I would make a, I don't see how my fellow selectmen feel, I would make a recommendation that somehow we, that we exempt any, from the sewer portion of any commercial account that has no connections at all, zero connections.
They're the only ones.
To the sewer system, that the, we waive the sewer fee.
The water goes into the sewer system, though, right?
No.
No.
No, they just water courts, that's all they do.
Oh, yeah, but I thought, I thought when there was extra and that kind of thing, that it went into.
There's no drains over there.
There are no drains, there's nothing.
There are no drains. But the question I have is, we've always spoken to people who have not been here, said, oh, I, you know, I'm only here four days a year, and why are you charging me for all this water and the sewer line? And we are paying for the infrastructure.
Well, that's, yeah, and I'm, I'm only suggesting in this case where we're variably billing the sewer charge in proportion to the water charge, that if you have no connection.
But someone's going to tell me that they, they weren't here for six months and didn't use the toilet.
Well, the water, they use the water.
Oh, no, okay, I've got your word, connection.
It's only, it's only, it's only in those cases of commercial accounts.
I've got you, I've got you. The word connection is the key here.
Right.
And I'll go along with it based on that.
Right. If you have no connection.
Okay.
Would, would, I think, I don't think it's fair to be charged in a sewer.
Well, no, no, I agree that it should not be variable, but again, going back to Mike's point about.
What do we do?
But they don't have the system, they're not part of the system.
You don't charge me, do you?
Right, when you have a septic, that's right, when you have a septic, we don't charge, so.
We don't charge the sewer, I think we treat them the same way between anyone.
And I don't, and I don't get charged for sewer. No, that's right.
Right.
Because you have a septic, yep.
Right.
Alright, so I think I'll make the motion that we waive the sewer fee on, on the tennis center due to the fact that there is no.
That they have no connection to the sewer system.
No connection to the sewer, it's not used yet.
So, alright.
Can I get a second on that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we will abate the $398 and.
And, well, we're permanently abating it.
Yes, permanently, yes, no, and then we will zero it.
So, the next bill, we don't have to abate it again.
That's right.
And I don't mind voting, but we'll forget.
Okay.
Any other? Other than that, I didn't have any issues with it, seemed reasonable. Ends of Waterville Valley, that's a dramatic drop.
Well, what, what happened, I think I explained in my memo, they were.
They had broken meters.
They had a broken meter.
Okay.
And, and instead of replacing the meter, they requested to just have a flat fee, as if they were 19 individually owned units. So, we were charging them.
Yeah.
The flat rate, and now we're, we're charging them based on actual usage, like other.
So, the meter's been fixed?
Yes, we put in the new meter as part of the project, correct.
Okay.
Alright, anything else, Mark, on the water? Bill? Alright, we'll move on. Calendar review. Anybody going anyplace?
Do you have any suggestions? No.
Alright, then we will. So, if we, so we, well, we'll talk about the water and sewer project. When we talk about that, let, can we talk about a special meeting? Because we're going to have the bids due next Tuesday.
Okay.
Which is the 19th. You don't have another meeting scheduled until the 27th. So, is it possible to have a special meeting Wednesday or Thursday next week?
That would be July.
The 20th or the 21st. I just happen to be free. I could do.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure, yes, I believe either of those would be fine.
Thursday afternoon isn't good for me.
So, we'll do Wednesday afternoon. The 20th at 3 o'clock? Wednesday at 3:00 PM, the 20th.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll either have Joe here personally.
So, that is on 7.
I'll either have Joe here personally or by telephone. I'll either have Joe here personally or by telephone.
Okay, let's talk about the water and sewer project update.
Yep.
Or, it's fairly, your, your things were fairly specific.
Yep.
I, I have the concern that Bill has, that we are not gonna get this done in time.
Well, we.
Assuming the extension. We get these bids, you're expecting bids back by next week, right?
The nineteenth, yes.
Right. What date, when this, one of, one of the, what, date wise, what are, what's the expectation from the contractors? They had to be done by when?
Well, we, that's what we're waiting. If we get the extension, they would, they would have until the end of March, but what is substantially?
No, 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 yeah, but you can't, he, 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 here's, that's my concern, is can we get this stuff done by the end of November?
The.
Before the ground freezes?
The end of November, we will have the connection, we will have well for operation.
Let's, let's back it up. Let's do the completion backwards principle. What are you not expecting to have done by the end of November?
The interior of the building, the pumps and the treatment, uh, in the common treatment tank, that will not be done by the end of November.
And how much percentage of the dollars left is that?
Well, I, I won't know until I see the bid.
Ballpark, ballpark as if.
Ballpark, probably thirty or forty percent.
Okay, so thirty or forty percent?
Because there's a lot of equipment there.
Okay, no, no, I've got you on that.
Yeah.
And none of this can be considered substantially complete, is thirty or forty percent?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just gonna try and get a baseline.
So are, the, the approach that Joe asked.
So we can get the well connections made, but what we can't do.
The treatment center for it.
And that's what, cause of lead times on items?
There's lead time on the items and there's, and there's the actual, they have to, we, we want them to get the, the new well done first. That's the most important part.
Right.
The, that includes the electricity, the electricity service and everything out to the well. All of that, that's the top priority, that's the first thing.
And, 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 okay, so now, assuming that's done, what, what do we now have? Do we have an operating well?
We have an operating well that we can connect into our system.
That can go into the existing sewage treatment.
We can or will be.
We will be initially.
So this new well will be connected into the system.
That's correct, initially.
By November, so.
Yes.
If worse comes, all we're looking to do in the spring is to upgrade our treatment facilities, the treatment facility.
Yeah.
Of the water, and how we treat it.
That's correct.
We rewrote and treat. So if the world goes to hell.
Yes.
And we get, by November, we have, we don't have a well here and a pipe here, and nothing connects to show for.
That's correct. That's why that's the first priority, is that will be connected.
Okay.
So that, and, we want the concrete common treatment tank to be done, okay? And the shell of the building built around it.
Right.
Because once they get that done, if they can get that done by mid-December, okay?
Yeah.
Then they can spend the rest of the winter inside the building, putting in the pumps and the treatment, uh, facilities that, that are part of the project.
So theoretically, they're gonna be able to work through the winter.
That's right.
They're not gonna have to stop. We're gonna have everything done.
They will not stop. That's, that's.
That was one of my questions, was start and stop.
That's the way that we have structured this, and that's why we've only asked to extend out to the end of March.
All right, so.
Because all of that can be done in the winter.
Let's, now, now, you expect to hear on this March date by when?
I, I expect tomorrow that we'll know, tomorrow or Friday.
Tomorrow, okay.
Yeah.
Now, let's, let's start with the assumption that, that they come back and say, okay, that's it, no more extensions beyond this, but we'll give you to March.
Right.
Do, do, can we have an understanding with these contractors? If they do not get this work done by that date, they will not get paid.
That's correct. That's, that'll be part of the discussion, absolutely. We, we will, we will tell them that everything has to be done, all the pay recs, all of that have to be submitted by probably March fifteenth, whatever, close to Friday is, right?
Well, whatever the date, you know, I would not wait for the last.
And then that will give us two weeks, no, and then that will give us two weeks to close out.
I would never wait for the last, always something comes up at the last minute, and you, you know, that, you know, so you gotta leave yourself some time.
That's right. And so, beginning to mid-March, they will be told, you have to submit your, all your pay recs and everything, all the work has to be done. And then we will have the couple of weeks at the end of March to finish the paperwork with rural development. Because the March, I anticipate, if we get the extension, that March thirty-first date is the hard end date. For all of the money, there won't be a dollar more coming to us after that extension.
Did we include anything with well number three, or is that on the table?
Well, number three is an add alternate. If we have the money, we'll do it. We can add that, but it's a separate piece of the bid.
Okay.
The connection of well two to the common treatment tank is also an add alternate. So that if we go over the budget, the minimum that we will get done is connection of well four to our system. And the building.
I think a consideration is not only who the low bidder, but our perception of who in fact is reliable enough that when they give their word, they're gonna get something done, that we can rely on it. I'm, I'm just terrified that.
Yep.
You know, they're, they're gonna go beyond and we'll end up embroiled in a suit or something and.
And we've had contractors do that to us as part of this project, so we will be very careful.
So before we award this, we wanna reference on the last project, the last two projects they've done.
Right.
Absolutely. Yep, that's part of what Joe was looking at.
Okay.
The good, the good news is the contractors that have bid or, or have taken out, um, the packets for the bid, many of them are very reputable firms that are doing similar projects and, you know, have a good track record. So we've, other cities have worked with them, you know, Joe has worked with several of these companies and we know who they are.
Well, let's see what happens.
Well, I, well, except that.
We're gonna see who bids.
You know, I mean, I, I think, I think the guys who worked on the first segment of this were reputable. But my, my impressions were they, they didn't get done on time.
Well, and they were holding us hostage at the end.
Well, I don't know about holding us hostage.
Well, I think we had some situations where we, no, we had a low bidder that we selected that was probably not the best person to do it.
All right, well, let's, we'll hopefully have some resolve and some more answers.
So you've talked to Joe Ducham about what's really critical here from the perspective of the selectmen.
Yes.
Is that we have a contractor that we, that we really can rely on. That is more important than price.
Yes.
Okay?
All right. Let's move on. I took these out of order, so that's the water and sewer bill warrant, we've just passed it around, we signed it.
Yeah. I'll send it back.
Oh, did you vote to do that?
I'll make a motion to approve the water and sewer commitment summary for F-year, bill number two, F-year two thousand sixteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. All right, so we move on to the school recreation building agreement, and once again, I'd like to table that until Brooke is here, so she can interpret it.
You know, what, what we're back, is that, is this the same agreement, is this, Mark, is this the agreement they tried to get us to sign last time?
Yeah, and we had amended it, and we had an agreement where we had it all amended.
Well, I know, no, we had a, it gets into this word of the definition of the word priority.
Priority, yes.
You know, our definition is, their, their definition of priority means we have absolute veto rights over anything. Our definition is you get first choice, your first pick.
I will try to talk to Mike Fergel prior to the school board meeting. The school board meeting is next Monday.
Right.
And I'm going to that.
Hopefully, maybe.
Do we have the document with the agreed to changes?
Yeah, that's what I'd like, if we could, if we could get that out to us and compare it to this one, that would be great. And hopefully, we can maybe put this to bed next week when we meet.
You know, Brooke pointed out to me, and part of why I wanted you to talk to her, is she had, has worked out a system with the school. It is working, so we don't wanna sign an agreement that really changes what is working day to day.
And we got a new principle to come.
And we have a new principle, and so, you know, I hope that we can, um, you know, the.
Right.
The issue is gonna be personalities.
Yep.
Good. All right, great, so we'll table that till next week. Correspondence, the Fourth of July fireworks, I had a bunch of comments on it as well. Uh, for those at home, we were asked why the Fourth of July fireworks couldn't be on Sunday night instead of Monday night.
Because it was the third?
People were staying here because it was the third.
Well, how, did they like that answer?
Uh, no, they, they didn't like any answer. They wanted, you know, to be here for the fireworks because everyone had, to pretty much go home, and it's gonna be worse next year because it's gonna be on a Tuesday, but at least there won't be that much heat on it. But it's, Mark addressed it beautifully by saying traditionally, we've been on the fourth, these other towns surrounding us are on these other days.
Yeah.
And maybe we'll revisit this, or the next group of people will revisit it when it comes down to the fourth being on a Monday again.
Yeah.
But I think we're.
No, I, I just, you know, it's really up to you. We can, we can ask them to do another day, but.
Yeah.
I, you know, it's something that we go through periodically.
We didn't even think about it this year. It's completely, it's got to do it.
I, I, I thought the, having the parade, the, the, the WVAI picnic and the fireworks in the same day was worked out fine.
Yeah.
Gets it all out of the way, everyone has a good time.
Right, that was good.
And the AIA picnic did have the eighty people.
I.
Hundred and twenty.
A hundred and twenty, that's awesome.
And I thought, I thought that was much better than having a schluck meet up to the mountain, cook on the grill.
No, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Fight for grill space.
Fight for grill space, right.
Wow.
No, they had a good crowd, and they, and you could sit everybody and have more than enough food. There's no, I've heard.
I think what you should do is thank Mrs. Repetti for her.
Okay.
For her comment and say she wasn't along with the comments, and we'll, we'll look into her addressing it going forward, but the reasons you stated were great.
Yep, okay.
All right, any other correspondence?
Um, yes, a couple of, a couple of things here. Um, we had a question come up again about the zoning ordinance. Um, a new owner, I believe it's at Mountain Meadow or Mountain Sun or something.
Mountain Sun.
Mountain Sun. Um, so they own a boat, and they, uh, they aren't, they don't, the boat's not here. But they would like it to be here, um, during August fifth, sixth, and seventh, and then again sometime potentially in September, I think they said they might. We showed them in the zoning ordinance that, you know, it can't be stored in town if it's visible from any other property or from the roads. So that really limits where you can put it, which basically is inside a garage or something like that. We, I talked to Chris about this. Um, he feels that it's a very slippery slope if we allow them. They were, they were gonna ask Bill Cantlin if they could park it in the, uh, in the town square parking lots over by the skateboard park, but, um, Chris really does not wanna go there.
I think it opens a slip, it just sets a precedent.
It does. It does. It sets the precedent that, you know, we already, we have told property owners.
That they couldn't.
That they couldn't keep their boats here, so.
It's, it, the operative word here is visible from the general property, right?
Yep.
Because we do have boats stored up on the, there are people that are storing boats, but generally, they're hidden.
There was one person who kept one in Mountain Brook down the way in the back.
Well, up on River Road, there's a couple, you know, not on River Road, on, on West Branch.
Yes.
Britten has periodically had a boat.
Okay.
And I believe the Sullivan's got one right now. I'll have to drive by. It's not, not very visible.
Right. I mean, if we were to get a, an issue, you know, if we were to get a call and somebody complained about it, we'd have to do something about it.
I think that would be the response that if.
Or maybe it's a trailer, he's got something.
Yeah. But this, you know, there's everything, we've already had a couple of RVs with people camping in them in the town square parking lots, had to ask them to leave.
Yeah. Now, I think you're taking the right course.
You know, so I, I just wanted to confirm with you that we're doing what you want us to do.
Okay, great.
Okay. Um, good, so we'll take care of that. Uh, we get the meeting with Brooke next time. Oh, we've received notification from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation that we, we can submit, uh, our TAP grant application, so we've been approved.
Yeah.
Um, there have been fifty-six applications, or fifty-six towns or entities that they're gonna be taking applications from.
Out of how many?
Uh, I don't know how many were submitted. Um, the last round, they awarded.
A couple hundred in the state, I think, right?
Two hundred and fifty-three towns in the state.
Right, but how many towns sent in?
I don't know how many towns sent them in. Um, the last round, there were twelve awards.
Yeah.
Um, this year, there's six million dollars available. Um, they anticipate that they will award somewhere between ten and twelve because most are in the half million to seven hundred thousand dollar range. Um, and there's a pre-application workshop on July twenty-eighth that is mandatory for submitting.
Are you going?
The grant. I am going. Yep. Um, so, uh, that, I think is good news.
Yep.
Um, we also had the, we're just waiting to hear back from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. They came here, they reviewed the site with me.
Yeah.
Um, they didn't see any problem with, uh, the project. Um, but we are gonna have to negotiate with the athletic center because it does come with strings attached, um, if we get this money. So, because this money in no way can be used for private business. It's gotta be a public use. So, I don't know if, if you guys wanna pick somebody or if you wanna do it as a board, but I would like to, as soon as I can get Tom Gross's attention long enough, I, I think we need to sit down and, and start talking about, brainstorming about what, uh, kind of an agreement there would be if they were to give us the land, which is critical for our application.
Right.
So, uh, I don't, what do you, what do you think?
Well, I think, I'd like to see what the cri, the specific line item to the criteria is. To see when it says no private use, is there a quasi, uh, public use that can be allowed, which.
Yes, and what, the way that the guys.
Back on the same lines as the hockey arena.
Right. The way, the way that they, the guys from the state, uh, from Dred explained it to me is, if we are, if we give them an easement, say, to, to use a portion of the land to build tennis courts, because that's one of the things that Tom keeps bringing up. They, we have to give everybody the same rights to use that land, the same opportunity to use that land as the athletic center has. So it, it would have to be scheduled through the town, probably the rec department. And then other people would have to have an opportunity.
So we can't.
So they can't do anything exclusive to that.
So we can't lease this land back to them as we do in the hockey arena.
That's correct. We cannot. We cannot.
So that takes some thinking of how.
How do you structure that, and that's what I'm.
That's not an easy question.
Right. So I, I don't think we're, I didn't wanna answer the question, but, but I just, I need to know if you guys want one person to do this or.
Well, I have been home, but go ahead.
Well, I think once we come up with a plan, we'll figure it out. Let's figure out what the plan is first.
What say?
Because if three of us are.
Oh, no, no, you don't have to.
I bet you.
I have, we have a.
Yeah.
No, we don't have a business, we don't know what we're gonna offer or what they want.
I think the roof is done outside.
Oh, you guys, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, you don't know, because I, I've been operating under the thought that we would lease the space back to them and help them administer. But if, if, if that.
It's gonna, I, I think if, if, um, the problem is gonna become, they, they really wanna be able to, for their groups to be able to lease it and collect, you know, I think, collect some money or something and be able to keep that money, that's gonna be problematic.
Yeah.
See, I thought if we could, yeah, I thought if we could lease it back to them, and they could hire someone to administer them, and they could get a revenue stream out of this, it would be work for them.
Kind of like the hockey arena. But now this is a completely new way to think about it. Uh, why don't we, can we table this till next week? Just because I, I really need to think about it.
Now, what's the purpose of the grant is to what, level the lot?
Level, clear, put in the fields.
Yeah, build the fields, do all the drainage, do all the clearing, build the, um, path around, build the parking lot. It, it's very extensive.
I think, I think the, to, according to Mike, the operative word here would be, if we, if, if, let's, let's suppose this was town land. Let, let's suppose they didn't own it, right? And we build these fields, that, the definition of all citizens would have an opportunity to be able to use it. Does, does that allow us to lease it to all citizens? Could we, could we rent, in other words, anybody first come, first served, wants to sign up on a schedule, we could rent it to them.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
But the rent would be acceptable.
Yes.
So if the, if the athletic center is the only entity that actually ever asked to rent it, it's not a problem.
See, that's what I'm trying to figure out, a methodology to.
If they're the only ones that ask. We don't have to offer it for free to anyone else.
No.
All right, well, then it's, then I think it's a possibility. I, I think they'd have to understand that we would have to, if, if they gave us this property and we got this grant and we got this work done, that's a lot of hypotheticals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, what we would propose is, is we would, um, for any, for any and all citizens who choose, for whatever reasons, they wanna lease this facility, we'll, we'll publish a list of prices.
Right, we'll have prices and we'll have the schedule, and the schedule will be controlled by the recreation department.
Right.
They can't run, you know, they can't take over like the arena. They can't take over and staff the facility.
No, right.
For their own profit.
Well, see, that's weird.
Okay, then, now they.
But if we lease, if we lease it to them, they can, they should be able to do whatever they wanna do.
They can, they can run their program as long as the schedule.
Which is, what you just said is not for their own profit.
No, 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 it's not the profit that's the problem. You gotta offer it, what's different would be is if the agreement on the ice skating center was John, John Mainly, he's an exclusive renter right now.
Right, but he has.
We, we would let other people rent it.
But could we do this? Could we do it, take, and go back to the example of the ice arena? Could they rent it from us for a, a token fee, and part of the contract would be that it's open to the public the same hours public skating is open, and open to the school during the school, school times?
I don't know, we'd have to.
Okay.
Yeah, it depends on your interpretation of when they say it's gotta.
We would have to reach an agreement with them, submit it to Dred.
Right.
Right.
And say, this is the way we wanna operate this. That's right. And say, this is the way we wanna operate this, that's right.
All right, I need more than five minutes to think about that.
Oh, no, no, absolutely, I wasn't asking for a decision, I think.
And I think, I think that's exactly right, you, you should go and say, look, here's, here's the, we would come up with, we would lease it to this, we would lease it back to this entity, and the town would, you know, I don't know, whatever.
And part of the lease contract.
And part of that contract would be that twenty percent or X percent of the time would have to be set aside.
Right, and this entity would maintain it.
For any citizen who wants to use it, and would, would that be acceptable if not?
That's the question.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna submit the grant.
Why would we not, why wouldn't we go and negotiate with the athletic center, maybe they'll give us.
They're not gonna, they've already told.
We can ask them that question.
I've already had that conversation.
You know, would they just give us the land?
Okay.
But you can ask them, ask them, would they give us the land and we'll get this work done and then we'll have a nice athletic field.
And they can rent it from us? Why can they not, why wouldn't they, why wouldn't they wanna do that?
Ask him if, well, I, I don't know, ask them, maybe they, maybe they're trying to get rid of this, I don't know.
All right, ask, we'll, we'll talk about it next week.
Okay.
All right, any other correspondence?
Uh, no, that's.
All right, great, so it's, it is twelve minutes after four, and I think we'll go into non-public.
This is where, the part, part of the meeting where we spread town gossip.
We do, actually, we make up the new gossip for the week.
Yeah, we make up the new gossip.
That's us, right?
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.